Just one minute, okay? Recording in progress.
Okay. I would like to call the meeting to order, and we have been here since this afternoon, so we've done regular municipal business. Now our planning hearings, but before we do that, I need a resolution to please come out of camera.
Resolve that ask for section 152.4 of the municipal act. Councilor Roberts by the same comments does not resume sitting of regular meeting.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Horvath, Counselor Bazeroit, seconds. All in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. And I should have mentioned, we have one counselor who is not with us tonight, but he is on Zoom, so he will be participating in the meeting this evening. And with that, I'm going to call on our planning assistant, Kayla, to read the rules for this evening's meeting.
Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. Council wishes to thank you for taking an interest in what is happening in your municipality by attending this evening. The purpose of these public hearings is to receive representations from the applicant as well as any persons who wish to make representation on what is being proposed. We will first hear from the applicant and then from both present who wish to make representation. This will start with anyone who would like to speak in favor of the proposal, followed by those who are opposed to or object to the proposal. At the end of these other presentations, the applicant will have an opportunity to respond. Outside the council chambers, you did find those sign-in sheets. We do ask that you please sign in if you'd like to speak tonight. At the end of each presentation, the members of council may ask for clarification from the speaker on any fact or issue, but will not enter into a debate. At your opportunity to speak, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record. Person speaking must address the chair. If they have questions that they think the applicant should answer, they should raise them in the presentation to the chair. The applicant will have an opportunity to respond to questions when the other presentations are finished. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Kayla. So the first item on our agenda this evening is the conditional use, and it's number 47 of 2025.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did want to also inform all for individuals that may not be aware of some of the rules that are associated with a public hearing, which is that all questions are to address to the chair only. And if you'd like to speak and have not registered, you'll have an opportunity to raise your hand at the end, and the chair will address you. No clapping, shouting, or cheering during any presentations or afterwards, as well as disrespectful behavior will not be tolerated, and you may be asked to leave. Presentation of any signage will not be permitted as part of a public hearing, and debating with others is not allowed in a hearing. So on that, Madam Mayor, I'll introduce the conditional use, so we can enter into. Resolve that the regular meeting be adjourned and the public hearing be open for conditional use, 47 of 2025.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Spicer, Counselor Bazeroit, seconds. All in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. So I will do this again. Conditional use number 47 of 2025 in the name of Isla and Bittler. And I will turn it over to planning to walk us through that application, please.
Want to stop sharing?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We will continue with the planning hearings. And first issue you mentioned, conditional use application, CU 47, 2025, located on 82052 St. Peter's Road. And the purpose of that application is to establish a garden suite in AR agricultural restricted zone. So as per zoning law of San Comets, in AR, a zone, the garden suites are conditional according to Table 10.5, Section 233. And here we can see the subject location, AR location map, and also some site plan from the applicant, and conditions of approval. Should counsel wish to approve this application, AR, here recommends the following conditions, and the conditions are: This conditional use is limited to what has been presented. Any changes will require a new conditional use approval. An applicant owner obtains all required permits from RPD and municipality if required. Applicant owner to pay any outstanding taxes, fines, or fees to the AR of San Comets. An applicant owner to construct a temporary foundation for the garden suite. It shall be placed on a pad of post foundation only. An applicant owner to construct a garden suite not larger than 1,200 square feet. Applicant owner must remove the garden suite within six months upon cessation of occupancy of which it was intended. An applicant owner to contact hydrologic forecasting and water management from Manitoba Transportation and Infrastructure to stabilization for the garden suite, and the property is located as a property located in a flood protection zone. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for that, Valentina. Any questions from members of council to the planner? Is the applicant in the audience this evening?
Yes.
Do you have anything that you want to add to your application? And if you could, please come to the podium. And just state your name and your physical address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Leah Isla, 82052 St. Peter's Road. I don't really have anything to add to the application. This garden suite is like small, who's aging and spends a lot of time in this already, so I don't really have anything else to add. Is that great?
Okay, I will see if there is anybody else who wishes to speak, and if we need to, we can call you back up if there are some other questions. Okay, is there anybody else in favor of this application who wishes to speak this evening? Is there anybody in the audience who is opposed to this application and wishes to speak? Is council prepared to deal with this application this evening?
Please step forward.
Oh, go ahead, Counselor Sutherland, sorry.
Just curious, is it hooked up to the water supply from the other house? Like the septic is out of a field or a holding tank? How many acres is that property on?
You might as well stay out there.
I'll stay there.
Okay, so there was a previous garden suite in that location from a previous owner, and so they do have a well there, septic system, and electricity there already.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from council? Go ahead, Counselor Spicer.
This one might be for administration. So it's talking about Manitoba transportation infrastructure to set the elevation, but we also do lock rates, don't we?
We do, but when it's in the flood prone area, we rely on the causes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, so if there is nobody else to speak on this application, I will ask for a resolution to close the public hearing on this conditional use.
Resolve that the public hearing, conditional use 47 of 2025, be closed, and the regular session of council be reconvened.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Strang, Counselor Belange, seconds. All in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. The council is ready to proceed. I will ask for a resolution to bring this conditional use forward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas the applicant owner of tax role number 405660, a property legally described as block 22190, and located at 82052 St. Peter's Road, has made application for conditional use 47 of 2025 in order to establish a garden suite in the AR agricultural restricted zone. Therefore, be it resolved, conditional use application number 47 of 2025 be approved with the following conditions: This conditional use is limited to what has been presented in this application. Any further changes, replacement, or additions would require a new approval. Two, applicant owner obtains all required permits from the RNDR district and the municipality if required. Three, applicant owner to pay any outstanding taxes, fines, or fees to the AR of San Comets. Four, applicant owner to construct temporary foundation to the garden suite. It shall be placed on a pad and post foundation only. Five, applicant owner to construct the garden suite no longer than 1,200 square feet. Six, applicant owner must remove the garden suite within six months upon cessation of occupancy of which it was intended. Seven, applicant owner to contact hydrologic forecasting and water management from Manitoba Transportation Infrastructure to set the elevation level for the garden suite as the property is located in a flood protection zone. Approval shall expire if not acted upon within 12 months of data making.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Spicer, Counselor Horvath, seconds. Any further discussion on this conditional use application? Hearing is seen, now I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed? And that is carried.
Can we also remind everyone to please put your phones on silence?
Is there anybody with a speaker up here? Can you turn that, please?
Turn it on. We're not working at all.
Can I ask everybody to please silence your phones? Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is variation order 98 of 2025, and if I could have a resolution to move into variation board, please.
Resolve that the regular meeting be adjourned and the public hearing be open for variation order 98 of 2025.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Sutherland, Counselor Horvath, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing is seen, now I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. Okay, so I will turn it over to the planner to walk us through this application.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is a variance application, VO 988, 2025, located on 593rd Street. And the purpose of that application is to increase the number of accessory structures and combine accessories for footage, and reduce the front yard and side yard setback in order to allow for an accessory structure to be constructed in SR seasonal resort zone. As per zoning law of San Comets, in SR season in the resort zone, the the front yard setback is supposed to be 13 feet minimum, and they're proposing 13. The side yard setback is supposed to be 10 feet minimum, and they're proposing 8. The number of accessory buildings maximum is supposed to be two, and they're proposing to increase it to four. And combined square footage for accessory structures is supposed to be 800 square feet maximum, and they're proposing 1,200 and 6.5 square feet. Here we can see AR location map of the subject property, and some side plan from the applicant with a proposed garage on it. And comes the conditions of approval. Should counsel wish to approve this application, AR, here recommends the following conditions: And this variance is limited to what has been presented. Any other changes will require a new variance approval. Applicant owner obtains all required permits from us and municipality if required. Applicant owner to pay any outstanding taxes, fees, or fines to our RAS. Applicant owner to use the accessory structure for personal storage only. And applicant owner is not to use the accessory structure for any habitable space. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for that, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, if I could just interrupt for a second. Please, anybody that's speaking outside, it's difficult for council to hear and to be able to participate in the public hearing. If you want to speak, you're more than welcome to walk out the building and speak, but please respect other applicants that are here today. Thank you.
Okay, does council have any questions for the planner at this point? Is the applicant in the audience this evening? I do have one name on my list who is supposed to be on Zoom. Do you have Frank Noeth on Zoom?
Yep, we are here. Frank Noeth, we have no questions.
You have no questions, is what you said? Or you have a question? Go ahead then, please.
We do not have a question.
Okay, thank you. I think, was this the one that was asking about the rocks?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
So I'd just like to say, earlier today, we had received a comment from a neighbor in the area. We have the information here, but they weren't opposed to the variance application. However, they did make a suggestion, and I believe council, we attached the slides in your presentation. One of the concerns is these roads out at the beaches are very narrow, and it looks like the applicant actually has rocks within our road right of way, and very large rocks. So her comments were, you know, maybe this could be addressed as part of the variation order. There was a picture sent, which we believe is a staking line of the property, showing the rocks being into our right of way. So it would be recommended that if confirmed that the rocks are within the road right of way, that these rocks, more like boulders, be removed to be added as a condition to this application.
To be placed on their own property?
To be placed within their property lines. Thank you.
Okay, I do not have any other names on my list, but I will ask if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this application. And I'm not sure who that letter was received from, but we do have one in our packages that shows the rocks on the, very close to the right of way. Is that the same letter?
Yes.
Okay. So with that, if there is no one else who wishes to speak on this application, I will ask for a resolution to come out of, or close the public hearing on this and move it forward if possible.
Resolve the public hearing for variation order 98 of 2025 be closed, and the regular session of council be reconvened.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Strang, Counselor Sutherland, seconds. All in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. So with that, I will ask for the resolution for this application, please.
Whereas applicant owner of tax rule number 701400 legally described as block 10, Plan 7770, located at 593, Birch Grove Street, has made application for variation order number 98 of 2025. From front yard setback 30 feet to front yard setback 13 feet, from side yard setback 10 feet to side yard setback 8 feet, from number of accessory buildings two to number of accessory buildings four, from combined square foot for accessory structure 800 square feet, maximum combined square foot for accessory structures 1,200 and 6.5 square feet. Purpose to increase the number of accessory structures and the combined accessory square footage, and reduce the front and side yards setbacks in order to allow for an accessory structure to be constructed on the subject property. Therefore, be it resolved, variation order 98 of 2025 be approved with the following conditions: One, the variance is limited to what has been presented in the application. Any further changes, replacements, or additions require a new variance approval. Two, applicant owner obtains all required permits from RNDR district and the municipality if required. Three, applicant owner to pay outstanding taxes, fees, or fines to the AR of San Comets. Four, applicant owner to use the accessory structure for personal storage only. Five, applicant owner is to not use the accessory structure for habitable space. Six, applicant owner to obtain a lock rate permit from the AR of San Comets for construction of the building. Seven, the applicant owner to confirm location of rocks on property, and if necessary, move them to their own property off of a public right of way. Approval shall expire if not acted upon within 12 months of the data making.
Thank you for that. Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Horvath, second, please. Counselor Strang, any further discussion on this application? Hearing is seen, now I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. Okay, the next application we have is variation order 105 of 2025, and if I could move into variation board again, please.
Resolve that the regular meeting be adjourned and the public hearing be open for variation order 104 of 2025.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Horvath, second, please. Counselor Belange, all in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. And I will turn it over to the planner to walk us through this one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is a variance application, VO 104, 2025, located on 20th 18th Road. And the purpose of that application is to increase accessory height, the number of accessory buildings, and the combined unit area for accessory buildings in our rural residential zone. As per zoning law of San Comets, the height for any accessory structure is supposed to be 13 feet, and they're proposing 15.5. Number of accessory buildings is supposed to be two maximum, they're proposing four. And combined unit area of accessory buildings is supposed to be 1,280 square feet maximum, and they're proposing 2573 square feet as a combined unit area. So here we can see AR location map of the subject property, and some side plan from the applicant, and conditions of approval. Should counsel wish to approve this application, AR, here recommends the following conditions: This variance is limited to what has been presented. Any other changes will require a new variance approval. Applicant owner obtains all required permits from us and municipality if required. Applicant owner to pay any outstanding taxes, fees, or fines to the RAS. Applicant owner to use the building for the personal storage only. And applicant owner to acquire permits from Manitoba Transportation and Infrastructure for the structures if required. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for that. Any questions from council to the planner? Okay, is the applicant in the audience this evening?
Yes.
Do you have anything that you want to add to your application at this point in time? Nothing? Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this application? I'm not seeing any hands be raised or anybody walking forward, so if it is the wish of council, we can close this public hearing and see if we can move this one forward.
Resolve that the public hearing for variation order 104 of 2025 be closed, and the regular session of council be reconvened.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Strang, Counselor Spicer, seconds. All in favor? Opposed? And that is carried.
I want to apologize for us switching back and forth on mics. Several of our mics stopped working today, and so we are having some technical difficulties that we're dealing with. So variation order 104, resolution. Whereas the applicant owner of tax rule number 302162 legally described as block 1, block 2, Plan 46907, and located at 20th 18th Road, has made application for variation order number 104 of 2025. From accessory building height 13 feet to accessory building height 15.5 feet. From a number of accessory buildings two to number of accessory buildings four. From combined unit area accessory buildings 1,280 square feet to combined unit area of accessory buildings 2,573 square feet. Purpose to increase the accessory height, increase the number of accessory buildings, and increase the combined unit area for accessory buildings in order to allow for an accessory building to be constructed on the subject property. Therefore, be it resolved, variation order 104 of 2025 be approved with the following conditions: One, the variance is limited to what has been presented in this application. Any further changes, replacements, or additions would require a new variance approval. Two, applicant owner obtains all required permits from the RNDR district and the municipality if required. Three, applicant owner to pay any outstanding taxes, fees, or fines to the AR of San Comets. Four, applicant owner to use the building for personal storage only. Five, applicant owner to acquire permits for Manitoba Transportation Infrastructure for the structures if required. And approval shall expire if not acted upon within 12 months of the data making.
Thank you for that. Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Sutherland, second, please. Counselor Spicer, any further discussion? Hearing is seen, now I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. The next item we have on the agenda is variation order 110 of 2025, and I will ask for a resolution to move into variation board.
Resolve that the regular meeting be adjourned and the public hearing be open for variation order 110, 2025.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Bazeroit, second. Counselor Belange, second. All in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. Okay, so I'll turn it over to the planner to walk us through that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is a variance application, variance application number VO 110, 2025, located on 72025, 2028 East. And the purpose of that application, that applicant is seeking approval for two accessory buildings to remain on subject property prior, to obtain a development permit for a principal building as a condition of subdivision as 222973 in AR agricultural restricted zone. As per zoning law of San Comets in AR, agriculture restricted zone accessory buildings are not permitted to be constructed before the primary allowance, so they are expected to remain on the subject property as a result of the subdivision that been approved previously. Here we can see the AR location map of the subject property, and the applicant's site plan, and what proposed accessory structure to remain on proposal number two, and conditions of approval. Should counsel wish to approve this application, AR, here recommends the following conditions: And go without standard. The variance is limited to what has been presented. Okay, sorry for that. So this variance is limited to what has been presented. Any other changes will require a new variance approval, and applicant owner obtains all required permits from us and municipality if required. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for that, Valentina. Any questions to the planner from members of council? Okay, is the applicant in the audience this evening? Just come forward to the podium if you don't mind, just a little easier to hear.
Sure. Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Did you need a prescription? 17025, 2028 East. It's, we're just dividing our property in half. It's 50 acres. Originally, there was a barn built in 1970, and a shop built in 2000, and those are going with the new property.
Any questions to the applicant from members of council? Go ahead, Counselor Spicer.
Okay, so I'm assuming that property is being sold?
Not necessarily.
Okay. Is there any plans for a residence to be built on this property? And if so, is there a timeline?
No. Not, there's no. No, not, there's no timeline. We're hoping one of our children will eventually to go.
Okay, any other questions from council to the applicant? Sounds like you're okay for now, but I am going to ask if there is anybody else who wishes to speak, so... Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this application? Doesn't appear that there is, so if you want to have a seat, we'll see if we can move this one forward.
So since this wasn't a public hearing, we're going directly to the resolution, which is subdivision application.
Oh, this is called variation.
That's the variation?
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize. So, close. Resolve that the public hearing for variation order 110 of 2025 be closed and the regular session of council be reconvened.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Strang, Counselor Horvath, seconds. All in favor, opposed, and that is carried.
Whereas applicant owner of tax rule number 241305 legally described as block one, plan 240600, and located at 72025, Road 28 East, has made application for variation order number 110 of 2025. For accessory building prior to principal building to two accessory buildings prior to principal building. Purpose to allow for two accessory buildings to remain on the subject property prior to obtaining a development permit for a principal building as part of the conditions of subdivision S22-2973. Therefore, be it resolved, variation order 110 of 2025 be approved with the following conditions: One, the variance is limited to what has been presented in this application. Any further changes, replacement, or additions would require a new variance approval. Two, applicant owner obtains all required permits from the rent of her planning district and the municipality if required. And then approval shall expire if not acted upon within twelve months of data making.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Strang, Counselor Sutherland, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call a question. All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried. Okay, moving on, the next item on our agenda is a combination of a subdivision and a variation order. And we will be doing the subdivision first, and then we will do the variation. For the subdivision, there is no public hearing, so I would like to turn it over to the CEO if there's anything that we need to discuss, and if not, we can turn it over to the planner to walk us through the subdivision.
I just need to explain that council has made a decision that subdivisions sometimes come forward as just single lot splits that don't require public hearing, but usually the variance with it does. And so residents wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to speak, so council gives them an opportunity to speak by bringing the subdivision and the variance at the same time. So the subdivision will be heard first, it'll be adjourned and not decided upon, then the variance will be heard. This gives an opportunity for anybody that's associated with the variance to speak. If there isn't any, then it'll go back to the subdivision for approval, and then the variance.
Okay, so this is subdivision file S253117, and if you could walk us through that one, please, Valentina.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So it is subdivision application S253117, located on 72084, Road 31 East. And the purpose of that application is to create one new 10-acre slot in the 40 agricultural limited zone. Here we consider location map of the subject property. And subdivision application map from applicant two, and somewhere the proposed lot. So according to the San Clements zoning law of A40 zone, all is supposed to be 400 feet wide, sorry for that. And they're proposing 10.02 acres and 480 feet for the proposed lot. And 79.85 acres and 479 feet for the residual lot. So according to the requirements of that zone, the proposed lot is no for the area and yes for the region. So as for the proposed lot, it's no for the area and yes for the region compliance and for the zoning law, and the residual lot is in compliance. Our analysis here that no new road is being proposed, no concerns from any agency to be raised, and this proposal is consistent with exemption in section 4.114.1 on development plans in RPD. And RPD recommendations. RPD recommends that application be approved with the conditions: Applicant owner submits confirmation and writing from municipalities stating that taxes on the land to be subdivided for the current year and any areas have been paid, required applicable fees to be paid as per zoning, as per by law A2023, and provide digital copy of the plan subdivision to RM2. Applicant owner obtains required lot density variance from the RM, and applicant submits confirmation and writing from Manitoba Environment and Climate Change that existing sewage ejector system has been decommissioned or certified exemption has been issued. They do have an option for it. They're proposing 10 acres lot, so they can still use ejector here. And that's it, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Valentina. Any questions to the planner on the subdivision? Okay, as we cannot make a decision on the subdivision, I'm going to ask for a resolution to move into the variation board so we can hear that, and then we can do them both together.
Resolve that the regular meeting be adjourned and the public hearing be open for variation order 111 of 2025.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Spicer, second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, call a question. All those in favor, opposed, carried. And Madam Planner, did you have anything that you wanted to add to the variance?
It's the same property as I mentioned before, and the purpose of the variance is here to reduce the minimum site area from proposed 40 to 10 acres, as I mentioned before, in the 40 zone. And it's the same property, same application and site plan as before, and conditions for the approval. Should council wish to approve this application, RPD recommends the following conditions: The standard that variance is limited to what has been presented. Any other changes will require a new variance approval. And applicant owner obtains all required permits from us and municipality if required. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for that. Any questions to the planner? Okay, is the applicant in the audience this evening? How are you?
Good. Thank you, Madam. Roger Williams. Yeah, in regard to be it the variance and subdivision application, our intent is to, we want to maintain our 10 acres, and with that, the plan is to have the 70 acres in town and cover daughter or partner, develop that and build on that appropriate property. We do intend to keep the injector and sharing that where everything complies to do.
Okay, thank you for that, Roger. Any questions to the applicant from members of council? Okay, I've not seen any questions from there. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this application? Okay, I've not seen anybody, so if I can have a resolution to close the variation?
Resolve that the public hearing for variation order 111 of 2025 be closed and the regular session of council be reconvened.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Bazerojich, Counselor Belange, seconds. All in favor, opposed, and that is carried. Okay, so we're going to bring the subdivision forward, so I'm going to ask for the resolution for the subdivision.
Regarding subdivision application number S25-3117, proposal on night list to subdivide, legal subdivision nine and, legal subdivision nine and the north half of legal subdivision eight of section 613-6 EPM, easterly 440 feet of the legal subdivision 10, and easterly 440 feet of the north half of the legal subdivision seven of section 6-13-6 EPM. Resolve that council approve the applications subject to the following conditions: One, applicant owner submits confirmation writing from the municipal stating that the taxes on the land is to be subdivided for the current year and arrears have been paid; B, required applicable fees to be paid as per by law A of 2023; C, provide a digital copy of the plan of subdivision to the arm of St. Clement's; Two, applicant owner obtains required lot density variance; Three, applicant owner submits confirmation in writing from Manitoba Environment and Climate Change that existing sewage ejector system has been decommissioned or certified exemption has been issued. Please contact Manitoba Environment and Climate Change and Urban Compliance Enforcement Branch for more information. That's it, Madam Mayor.
That's it, okay. Thank you for that. Okay, can I have a mover, please? Counselor Strang, Counselor Horvath, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call a question. All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried. Okay, moving on.
So whereas the applicant owner of tax rule number 260600 legally described as northeast 6-13-6 E, and located at 7284, Road 31 East, has made application for variation order number 111-2025, from site area 40 acres to site area proposed lot 10.01 acres. Purpose to reduce the minimum site area of the proposed lot as part of the conditions of subdivision application S25-3117 in the 40 agricultural limited zone. Therefore, be it resolved, variation order 111-2025 be approved with the following conditions: One, the variance is limited to what has been presented in this application. Any other changes, replacement, or additions would require a new variance approval. Two, applicant owner obtains all required permits from the rent of her planning district and the municipality if required. Approval shall expire if not acted upon within twelve months of data making.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Sutherland, second. Counselor Bazerojich, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call a question. All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried. Okay, so we can move on to our next item on our agenda, and again, it's another combination of a subdivision and a variance. Okay, so moving along, subdivision file S253118, if you want to bring that one forward for us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is subdivision application S253118, located on 72084, Road 28 East, and the survey two dash five two one zero eight zero, and the law numbers, those are one as an acre to one half. And the purpose of that application is to adjust the boundaries between two parts of the residual lot one and residual lot two by creating a third lot, the proposed one, of 10.02 acres big from the properties of 40 and 39.96 acres in A40 agricultural limited and AA agricultural general zones, property partially actually exists in part of that. So here we can see the subject in the properties, the north part of that located in AA, and the south one in A40 zone. And here we can see applicant subdivision location map. And I, a little bit out to myself to draw here with a highlight of yellow for you just to show that the applicant created the lot partially exists on the residual lot number one and residual lot number two, and they created something in the middle as a third one, the proposed one. So the summary of the lot here, the proposed lot, according to the San Clements by law, supposed to be 8 acres or 40, 40 acres and 300 feet wide, and they're proposing 10.02 and 60, 662.6 feet wide. That's no for the site area and yes for the site width. And residual lot number one, supposed to be 8 acres and 300 feet, and they're proposing 32.18 acres and 174 feet, that's now in compliance two. And residual number two, supposed to be 40 acres and 300 feet, and they're proposing 33.94 acres and 6957 feet wide. And that's no for the site area and yes for the site width according to the zoning law of San Clements. So our analysis here that RPD notes that no new road proposed, variance will be required to bring the undersized lots into compliance. And Manitoba agriculture reserves development has some concerns that connect to agricultural lands, and proposal is inconsistent with the development line here. So RPD recommendation and conditions for that approval, RPD recommends that application be rejected. If council wishes to approve this application, RPD recommends the following conditions: Applicant owner submits confirmation and writing from municipalities stating that taxes on the land to be subdivided for the current year and any areas have been paid, required applicable fees to be paid to, provide a digital copy of the plan, and applicant owner prepares drainage plan to be submitted to RM also. Applicant owner to provide a lot of credit to municipalities required prior to drainage construction. Applicant owner obtains the required lot density variance from RM2. Applicant owner submits written confirmation from Manitoba High Road that the UZIM has been entered into with them. And applicant owner submits confirmation and writing from Manitoba Environment and Climate Change that existing sewage ejector system has been decommissioned or certified exemption has been issued. That's it, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And then to the variation? Go ahead, Counselor Spicer, sorry.
So just for clarification, agriculture registered a concern, but they're not objecting?
No, they're not objecting, yeah.
Okay, are you?
No, I don't think I have any questions. So now we go to variation order 93, so... Resolve that the regular meeting be adjourned in the public hearing be open for variation order 93 of 2025.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Bazerojich, Counselor Spicer, seconds. Discussion, call a question, all in favor, opposed, and that is carried. And I'll turn it back over to you, Valentina, to walk us through the variation.
For sure, Madam Mayor. So the variance application via 93, located on the same property, and the purpose of that application is to reduce the minimum site area and width as a part of the conditions for the previous subdivision that we discussed here in the agricultural general zone. As per zoning law, it's supposed to be 80 acres and 40 acres at some upper one, and the most of the properties are 80 acres also, 300 feet also. And proposed lot number one, they're proposing 10.02 acres, and residual lot number one, proposing 2.88 acres and 174 feet. And residual lot number two, they're proposing also 33.94 acres, this is the lot. Same subject property, same applicant's site plan or subdivision application map. And conditions of approval, should council wish to approve this application, RPD recommends the following conditions, goes out standard to conditions of ours, this applicant, this variance is limited to what has been presented. Any other changes will require a new variance approval, and applicant owner obtains all required permits from us and municipality if required. if required. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for that, Valentina. Any questions to the planner on this variation? Okay, is the applicant in the audience this evening?
Yes, sir.
Did you have anything you wanted to add to your application at this point?
No, not really, just.
Okay, can you just state your name for the record because the meeting is being recorded?
Victor O'Barry.
Okay, thank you. Was there anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak on this application? Can I have a resolution to close the hearing on the variation phase?
Resolve that the public hearing for variation order ninety-three of two thousand twenty-five be closed, and the regular session of council be resumed.
And I'm going to replace Counselor Bazeroich, Counselor Strang seconds, all in favor, opposed, and that is carried.
So regarding subdivision application S twenty-five dash three-one-one-eight, proposal of Hopek to subdivide the south halves, of the south halves of legal subdivision eleven and twelve of section twelve dash thirteen dash five EPM, the north halves of the south halves of legal subdivision eleven and twelve of section twelve thirteen dash five EPM, lot two, plan five-two-one-eight-zero, one of Big Land Title's office in southwest quarter one, twelve dash thirteen dash five EPM. Resolve that council approve the said application subject to the following conditions. Applicant owner submits confirmation in writing to the municipality stating that taxes on the land to be subdivided for the current year and arrears have been paid; B, required application fees to be paid as per bylaw eight of two thousand twenty-three; C, provide a digital copy of the plan of subdivision of the arm of St. Clements; D, applicant owner to prepare a drainage plan to be submitted to the arm of St. Clements for review and acceptance as per the servicing standard of the municipality; E, applicant owner to provide letter of credit to the municipality if required prior to drainage construction, amount to be determined; Two, applicant owner obtains all required density variances; Three, applicant owner submits written confirmation from Manicoff Hydrate that easement agreements have been entered into with Manicoff Hydrate with respect to existing and future facilities associated with the subdivision and the plan of easement as required by the Real Property Act has been provided. Registration of the agreement will be included as condition of the final certificate of approval. Four, applicant owner submits confirmation in writing from Manicoff Environment and Climate Change that existing sewage ejector system has been decommissioned or certified exemption has been issued. Please contact Manicoff Environment, Climate Change, Environment Compliance and Enforcement Branch for more information. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for that. Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Spicer second, Counselor Strang, any further discussion? Hearing in Seina, I will call the question. All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried. And if we can have the subdivision.
Variants.
Variants.
Whereas the applicant owner attacks law number two-five-four-nine-hundred, two-five-five-seven-twenty-five, legally described as northwest, twelve dash thirteen dash five E, lot two, plan fifty-two-one-eighty, and located at seventy-three-zero-eighty-three Road, twenty-nine east, has made application for variation order number ninety-three of two thousand twenty-five. From side area eighty acres to side area proposed lot one, ten point zero two acres residual lot one, thirty-two point one-eight acres residual lot two, thirty-three point nine-four acres, from site width three hundred feet to site width residual lot one, one hundred and seventy-four feet. Purpose to reduce the minimum side area and width of proposed residual lots as part of the conditions for subdivision application S twenty-five dash three-one-one-eight in the A eighty agricultural general zone. Therefore, be it resolved variation order number ninety-three of two thousand twenty-five be approved with the following conditions. One, the variance is limited to what has been presented in the application, any further changes, replacement or additions would require a new variance approval. Two, applicant owner obtains all required permits for a render of a planning district and the municipality if required, and approval shall expire from now acting upon within twelve months of the data making.
Thank you for that. Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Belange is moving second, please. Counselor Southernland, any further discussion? Hearing in Seina, I will call the question. All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried. Okay, moving on to zoning bylaws. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is a zoning bylaw amendment, and it's bylaw number thirteen of two thousand twenty-five, and I'm going to hand it over to the planner to walk us through that, please.
For sure, sure, Madam Chair. So this is a zoning bylaw amendment application by law number thirteen, two thousand twenty-five, and it's located on the whole St. Clements that qualification is needed.
Oh, sorry, we have to go to the public hearing courtesy of that. My fault. Resolve that the regular meeting be adjourned in the public hearing, be opened for bylaw thirteen of two thousand twenty-five.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Strang, Counselor Spicer seconds, all in favor, opposed, and that is carried. Go ahead, Valentina.
Thank you. So.
Excuse, uh, sorry, don't get it. Again, may I ask you to please keep quiet outside, please take it outside if you need to speak because please respect the application process. Good, Valentina.
Thank you. So, zoning bylaw amendment application by law thirteen, two thousand twenty-five, and refers to the whole zoning bylaws St. Clements, and the purpose of that application is to amend the RM of St. Clements zoning bylaw number five, two hundred and two, the refinements improvements, aimed at align zoning resolution to recent amendments to the building bylaw. These changes support district-wide harmonization efforts across the regular planning district. These proposed updates include next amendments only. And there are no changes to zoning designation or property rezonings are included. So our analysis here, that I already noted that this alignment will improve clarity for users, reduce regulatory conflicts, and promote streamlined development process throughout the district by removing outdated references, E.G. Building and Mobile Homes Act, B, removing outdated regulations, and C, refining text to reflect current requirements and practices. Also, the proposed amendments include the topics of construction timing, permanent application requirements, geotechnical records, pools, and hot tubs. Commenting agencies and departments has no concerns for this application, and our recommendation here to have the second reading for that application. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for that. Any questions to the planner on this zoning, rezoning changes?
I don't think there was any, I don't think there was anybody registered to speak to this, Madam Mayor, but we could certainly ask if anybody had on the audience that showed up to speak to her.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, this is regarding bylaw number thirteen of two thousand twenty-five. Was there anybody in the audience who was here to speak on this particular bylaw?
Does anybody want to speak on the bylaw?
It's very hard to hear folk here. Does anybody need to speak to bylaw thirteen, uh, five, uh, sorry, thirteen of two thousand twenty-five? It is for the zoning bylaw changes to, to address, uh, building bylaw changes and harmonization. Doesn't look like there's anybody to speak to that that was registered, or is there here to speak to that, so we could close the public hearing, Madam Mayor?
Does anybody want to?
No.
Excuse me, ma'am. We have to, we have to follow a public hearing process. I apologize for raising my voice, but I can't, uh, in order to protect the public hearing process, either the mayor speaks or I'm, I, I as, uh, as support for the, but what this is, is a public hearing for zoning bylaw amendments related with what was presented by the planner for harmonization of the building code changes, of the building bylaw changes with the zoning bylaw. That's all it is. It's been, it's been circulated and communicated.
I just, I don't think it was clear what, I'm sorry, I don't have your name. Is this with respect to bylaw number five, two thousand and two?
No. Well, yes, sorry.
To amend the previous bylaw, and that's the number of previous bylaw.
The previous bylaw.
I mean, sustained for now.
Okay, sorry, I just couldn't hear it back, so that's why I wanted you.
Yeah. Did everybody hear that? This is related with bylaw two of two thousand and two, but the amendments are specifically related with the building code and the building bylaw harmonization with the zoning bylaw. That's all it is. So one last time, anybody, anybody wanting to speak to this? Okay, thank you. So, Madam Mayor, we can close the public hearing.
Okay, please do.
Resolve that the public hearing for bylaw thirteen of two thousand twenty-five be closed, and the regular session of council be reconvened.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Hornis, Counselor Spicer seconds, all in favor, opposed, and that is carried. So if we want to bring the resolution forward for second reading, please?
Resolve that the bylaw thirteen of two thousand twenty-five be a bylaw to amend the arm of St. Clements zoning bylaw five of two thousand and two, as amended, be given second reading.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Spicer second, Counselor Belange, all in favor, opposed, and that is carried. And if we move to the next application, it is, we'll do the third reading, because there were no objections, we can carry on with the third reading of this bylaw.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, resolve that bylaw thirteen of two thousand twenty-five be a bylaw to amend the arm of St. Clements zoning bylaw five of two thousand and two, as amended, be read a third time.
Okay, can I have a mover, please? Counselor Bazeroich second, Counselor Strang, all in favor. Remember, it's a recorded vote because it's the reading of the bylaw, so please keep your hands raised. And Heather says she's good, so thank you for that, that is passed.
And again, ma'am, I apologize for raising my voice, I was just trying to get your attention.
Okay, so we're going to move on to bylaws on our agenda, and it is a public reserve closing, and I need a resolution to move into a public hearing again.
Resolve that the regular meeting be adjourned in the public hearing, be opened for bylaw five of two thousand and five.
Can I have?
Oh, two thousand and twenty-five.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Strang second, please. Counselor Spicer, all is in favor, opposed, and that is carried. And I do, I'm going to, I'm going to.
Yes. Sue's gonna, Sue's gonna speak to this.
Yeah, I must apologize this evening, as we don't have a presentation, there seems to be some miscommunication with what's happening. Um, we do have a bylaw in front of us, um, being bylaw number five of two thousand twenty-five. This is to close the public reserve within the RM of St. Clements. Um, I must let council know that there has been a small amendment since first reading. We have removed clause three of the bylaw, um, that we've had previously in the first reading. That section reads that as the proper officers of the municipality are hereby authorized and directed to do all acts and execute all documents required for the purpose of implementing the sale of land and said transfer. That has been removed from the bylaw, um, due to the fact that we can make small amendments that don't change the integrity of the bylaw. So, um, I believe I've presented quite a large report here on the history of the property. This property is thirty-three point four acres, and it's next to the Suge Lagoon at Keshel Park Trailer Park. Um, the reason why this was designated as a public reserve was because there is no residential development can occur within, um, now five hundred twenty-six meters of the residential property. Uh, the RM has requested to close it. Proper procedures have been followed in accordance with the Planning Act. First reading occurred on July twenty-second, which prompted the public hearing. A bylaw was sent to government agencies. Comments are attached to this report, which really show no, no concern. Uh, so the noted property has been posted, and it's, according to legislation, uh, properties are, are, is to be posted, or landowners within a hundred meters need to be notified by mail. In our case, the property was posted, and landowners within a hundred meter buffer were hand-delivered notice due to the postal strike. And the notices were posted in the municipal office and on the property post office boxes in the trailer park. Recommend, the recommendation is that administration, um, recommends that a public hearing be held, which is what we're doing tonight, and if they wish, if council wishes, they can complete second and third reading, close the public reserve. And I believe the resolutions are there in front of you.
Thank you for that. Okay.
So, I don't think, Madam Mayor, there's been anyone registered to speak to this, or there is one person?
There is one person that I have on my list, and I believe that, um, okay, they should be in the audience if they are here. Is there Mr. Glenn English in the audience this evening? You want to just come forward and?
Glenn English, forty-four, Danmark Road. I just, uh, as you said, there's a lot of confusion on this subject, so I have a lot of questions as to how this piece of property can be developed in a later date. Can it be changed to commercial? Uh, can it be, is there interest in land swapping with other municipalities? Nobody can give me any answers on this.
There is no, uh, to answer your question, there is no plans at this point, or if they're under the bylaws, who can answer this? Okay, when you go to change from a public reserve, if you have a plan to sell it, yeah, declare that in the bylaw. None of that has been done. Now, in the future, if somebody wants to acquire it or anything, and even if it was to be changed, right now, all it does is revert to the zoning that's existing on the land today, which is agricultural restricted. So nothing can be done on that land until somebody, if somebody acquires it, or if that happens in the future, or whatever, they would have to go through a rezoning, which would be a public hearing, and go through the entire approval process. All that can happen on this is that it's no longer considered as part of a public reserve, and we know for a fact residential development cannot be allowed due to provincial regulations.
So there is no interest in that property?
There was interest from one individual, uh, over a year ago, and that's long gone. There is no specific interest on that.
No interest in a land swap with the River East School Division?
No interest for a land swap directly with the River East School Division. They have never given us anything in writing saying that they want, are interested in that land. Otherwise, that would have been shared as part of this. Now, in the future, if the River East School Division has an interest in that land, they could certainly approach the Arm of St. Clements, and when that happens, then they'll go through the process. First order of the process would be that that land has to be declared surplus from the Arm of St. Clements. When it gets declared surplus, then that'll go to a public meeting. Once the land has been declared surplus, then it'll have to, then be determined, will it be in some sort of a, uh, whatever, whatever the negotiations happen on a land sale, purchase, or whatever, that'll be then brought forward as part of a public meeting again. Then, if that land is acquired by someone, for sake of argument, if it was a school division, they would still need to rezone it, which would then require a digital public hearing.
Which would be rezoned to?
I don't know.
Commercial or, or?
Only, the only thing it could be rezoned to is what would be allowed under provincial regulations, that close to a lagoon. So there's limitations on what could be allowed. The province has regulations associated with it.
Okay. Okay, I just, I couldn't get those answers. Phone me in the municipal full office and ask the questions.
I'm sorry, but we, it, it's very difficult to answer those questions outside of a public hearing, such as this, and glad you came, you ask those questions. We're more than willing to answer them when we have that relevant information. And obviously, staff that are working at the front office are not going to be aware of all those types of scenarios.
Understandable. Um, what is the reason for this change, like, at this time? Was there? Was there a time limit set on the reserve, public reserve?
No, no, it's, there are, that is land that could be possibly used in the future. Don't know. When that happens, it'll go through the appropriate process. The first, most important thing was that camp, land can't even be considered when it was considered as a public reserve because it was put in as a public reserve thinking that it was only restricting it for residential development. But that wasn't the intent, and that's why.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I do not have any other names on my list, but I will ask, as there are a number of people in the audience this evening, if there is anyone else who wishes to speak on this application for the public reserve closing.
Okay, Madam Mayor, then I look forward to closing of the public hearing. So resolve that the public hearing for bylaw five of twenty twenty-five be closed and the regular session of council be reconvened.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Horvus, Counselor Bazerojich, seconds. All in favor, opposed, and that is carried.
So resolve bylaw five, twenty twenty-five, be a bylaw to close the public reserve land, as amended, be given second reading.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Strang, Counselor Belange, seconds. All in favor, opposed, and that is carried.
So we don't have any specific objections. And so with that, Madam Mayor, we'll move to the third reading.
Thank you.
So resolve bylaw five, twenty twenty-five, be a bylaw to close the public reserve land, as amended, be read a third time.
Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Horvus, second. Counselor Spicer, any discussion? Hearing in Seina, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried. Okay, for all you in the audience here this evening, we're just going to take about a three-minute break here. We've been sitting here for quite some time, since two o'clock this afternoon. And I...
We will be starting the meeting. We will restart in about two to three minutes. Now, people can join in on any vacancies that are left.